Good evening, everyone. My name is David Fries. I'm the mayor of Tongonoxie and I'm calling to order this April 1st, 2024, regular meeting of the Tongonoxie City Council. Ms. Huntington, would you note that I am present and call the roll, please?
Yes, Mayor. Mr. Partridge?
Here.
Ms. McCutcheon is absent. Ms. Stevens?
Here.
Mr. Donnelly?
Here.
Mr. Dale?
Here.
Would you join us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and thank you for being here, everybody. Our second order of business is the approval of minutes in which we review the minutes from the previous meeting and approve them. Is there any questions or conversations regarding the minutes from the previous meeting?
I'll move to adopt.
Thank you, Mr. Partridge. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Ms. Stevens. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to consent agenda. First, we'll review the bill payments and then we're gonna make a little change to the agenda. But first, we'll review the bill payments for the previous period. Does anybody have any questions or conversations regarding that? Seeing none, I'd accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? With council's permission, I'd like to move the proclamations under the mayor's agenda up to consent agenda. First, we have the proclamation recognizing April 2024 as Child Abuse Prevention Month, prevented by the CAS Association. Make sure I get the right one. Yeah. Anybody care to read this into the record besides me?
Why don't you do one and we can do one?
Sounds good. So the proclamation, a proclamation proclaiming April 2024 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in the city of Tongonoxie. Whereas in federal fiscal year 2022, April, nearly 3.1 million children received either an investigation response or an alternative response. And whereas child abuse and neglect is a serious problem affecting every segment of our community and finding solutions requires input and action from everyone. And whereas our children are our most valuable resources and will shape the future of the city of Tongonoxie. And whereas child abuse can have long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects that have lasting consequences for victims of abuse. And whereas protective factors are conditions that reduce or eliminate risk and promote the social, emotional, and developmental well-being of children. And whereas effective child abuse prevention activities succeed because of the partnerships created between child welfare professionals, education, health community, and faith-based organizations, businesses, law enforcement organizations, agencies, and families. And whereas communities must make every effort to promote programs and activities that create strong and thriving children and families. And whereas we acknowledge that we must work together as a community to increase awareness about child abuse and contribute to promote the social and emotional well-being of children and families in a safe, stable, and nurturing environment. And whereas prevention remains the best defense for our children and families. Now, therefore, I, Mayor David Fries, city of Tongonoxie, mayor, do hereby proclaim April 2024 as National Child Abuse Prevention Month in the city of Tongonoxie and urge all citizens to recognize this month by dedicating ourselves to the task of improving the quality of life for all children and families. Counsel, if you agree, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you very much. I have a second proclamation. Would anyone care to read through this one? That'd be great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm Lauralee Stevens, mayor pro tem. You can read the very last part. If you name yourself. This is a proclamation proclaiming April 2024 as Sexual Violence Awareness Month in the city of Tongonoxie. Where sexual violence is widespread preventable is a widespread preventable public health problem and the problem crosses all economic, racial, gender, educational, religious, and societal barriers. And where sexual violence is any sexual act that is perpetrated against someone's will, which includes sexual assault, rape, unwanted touching, threatened sexual violence, and verbal sexual harassment. All types of sexual violence involve victims who do not consent, are unable to consent, or refuse to not allow the act. And whereas over a half of women and nearly one in three men experience some form of sexual contact in their lifetimes. And whereas one incident of rape is reported to Kansas law enforcement every seven hours, 19 minutes, 6 seconds. Over 5,300 people receive services for sexual assault from the Kansas Victims Advocacy Organizations each year. Whereas these statistics do not represent the true prevalence of sexual violence due to under-reporting. Whereas victims should have help finding the compassion, comfort, and healing they need with access to medical and legal services, counseling, and transitional housing so that they can. And whereas it is important, we must strive to create strong, connected communities that take care of one another, make decisions to ensure the safety and well-being of others to end sexual violence. And whereas we encourage victims to seek free and confidential assistance from Alliance Against Family Violence hotline, which is 913-675-7217. And I'm gonna pass this off to the mayor to finish.
Now, therefore, I, Mayor David Fries, city of Tongonoxie, mayor, do hereby proclaim April 2024 as National Sexual Violence Awareness Month in the city of Tongonoxie and urge all citizens to recognize this month. I would look for a sign of unity from the council by a vote of aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Motion passes. Thanks to all who do the work.
Yes.
It's needed.
Important issues. This month and every month.
Okay, moving on to old business. Did we have anyone sign up to speak tonight?
No signups, mayor. I do want to point out, I've neglected to introduce Katie Ervin, who's the director of the Alliance Against Family Violence, and she's in the audience tonight. I just wanted to recognize her attendance and if you'd like for her to introduce herself to the council, we'd welcome that as well.
Oh, sure. That'd be great if someone's here to... We'll do things a little backwards sometime.
Hi, as you said, I'm Katie Ervin. I'm the executive director of the Alliance Against Family Violence and I greatly appreciate Tongonoxi, the city of Tongonoxie, recognizing Sexual Violence Awareness Month as month of April. I don't have anything else to say because I didn't prepare anything. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and thank you for being here.
Okay. Nothing under old business, then. We'll move on to new business and consider approval of city attorney and municipal court judge reappointments. Mr. Brokovich?
Yes, thanks, mayor. So this item, under case A14-201, each April by the first Tuesday of the month, the mayor shall appoint with the consent of council a variety of positions for the city of Tongonoxie. Those include both the municipal court judge as well as the city attorney. The Honorable Ken Moore has served us for a couple of years now and he was interested in reappointment and is doing a great job for the city and for our court patrons. And so staff is recommending moving forward with that reappointment. And of course, you know, Ms. Kirstelik with the firm Stinson, she's been the city attorney for a little bit longer than that time period that Judge Moore's been here. And she's also interested in reappointment and staff is recommending that. In the packet, there are letters seeking reappointment from both the judge and Anna. We'd be happy to answer any other questions, but both of these need to be considered individually via the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Brokovich. Any conversation about the appointments, counsel?
Well, I sure, for one, appreciate the work that you two do and without you, it would be very difficult and we do appreciate, at least I do and I think the rest of the council does as well. So, thank you very much.
Anyone else? Well, I would request the city council's consent to appoint Kenneth Moore as municipal court judge. Vote in the affirmative by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Say aye. Motion carries. I also would request the city council's consent to reappoint Anna Kirstelik as city attorney. Would like the city council's consent, please respond in the affirmative by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Congratulations, both of you. Thank you for your service.
Very much. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to item B, consider approval of the 2024 facility temporary use lease for the Tongonoxie Water Park. Mr. Porter?
Thank you, mayor. This item should look familiar as I think this is the 15th year that the Tonguey tidal wave swim team has requested the utilization of the city of Tongonoxie Water Park facility for their summer programming and competitive meets that they host. This year, the submittal was provided for the second year from Gretchen Meitler, who I want to recognize that's here tonight and I'm sure would be thrilled to take any questions you have or comments. Gretchen and her team have submitted a request that you can see included in the agenda packet for reference. The season will span from May 28th to June 28th and contain many days of practice along with two scheduled home meets, which is a slight decrease from some years, which have had as many as three home meets. And the agreement is structured in a similar fashion to prior years. There's a slight increase to the fee per hour of staff time dedicated to the event, which bumped up from $14 to $15. That change is the first change in several years in that regard and we have increased lifeguard and assistant manager pay levels in 2022. So this will help us accommodate some of those increased costs that we see and help recover some of that cost for operations. I'd be happy to turn it over to you, Gretchen, if you have any comments. Staff don't have any concerns to express and we are fully recommending that you approve this lease agreement and we'll get it executed.
Thank you for the opportunity to come out and to hopefully be able to use the facilities again. We try to keep our numbers between 100 and 125. Last year, all those slots filled up within a matter of 48 hours. So, could definitely take on more if we had more space and more volunteers, but we try to keep it at those numbers in order to maintain the least amount of chaos possible during practices and meets. But, yeah, nothing's really changed. We're just rolling like we have over the years. So if anybody has any questions?
Well, God bless you, Gretchen, for the work that you do in keeping this thing, this program going.
I'm just the paper girl. And I don't even have to do all of that. We've really got a great team. There's three of us that are trying to do what one person used to do in the past. And I'm not sure how she did that.
Well, thank you and good luck.
It's always good to see the pool full when you're having meets on the weekends and it's so cool to have that many people in town and around. A benefit to our community.
Yeah, it's packed and then the businesses get overflow. It's really great to see.
Yeah, and like you mentioned, normally we have three home meets. They're still trying to finish that, that schedule. But we try to spread it out throughout all the towns and teams. So. No other questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more conversation? If not, I'd accept a motion.
I'll move that we authorize the water park manager to execute the lease agreement with Gretchen Meitler for the 2024 season.
Yeah, the motion. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you again. Item C, consider special event permit and public fireworks display permit applications for military vehicle show and World War II reenactment event on June 22, 2024. Mr. Porter?
Thank you, mayor. I'll give a brief introduction and then invite Lauren Feldcamp and Andy Burke, who are two people representing the special event permit application and are leading the charge on the organization of it, to answer any questions you might have or to give a quick overview of the event. As you can read in the agenda packet, the full details of the event span from later in the evening on Friday, June 21st, through the majority of the day on June 22nd. And the location of the proposed event is centered on the VFW Park property in downtown Tongonoxie. It does have proposed utilization of a couple small segments of city-owned property, which are in the vicinity of 103 Pleasant Street or the corner of Pleasant and Tongonoxie Drive. And then the adjacent property that you might recognize from the walking trail that crosses from the VFW Park next to the bypass parking for the water park that the city owns and then connects back to the Chieftain Park Loop at the road crossing on Tongonoxie Drive. So the event has a host of smaller segments in the schedule that you can note. Those include display of memorabilia of military vehicles and then actual reenactments and skirmishes or mock engagements that the reenactors participated. We evaluated this permit request on a couple items. Like the mayor mentioned in the introduction, the use of city property is one element that on a special event permit typically triggers the city council's consideration of the approval for that special event. In addition to that, one aspect of the display is the firing of a World War II-era cannon. And that is on the VFW property, but under our current city codes, that discharge would qualify as a fireworks display according to our current regulatory environment. And so fireworks display not during the prescribed 4th of July holiday does require that the city council consider and approve such displays, even if they occur on public or private property. There's really no distinguishing factors there. Another key piece when city property is being utilized is insurance and the applicant team has determined that they're able to name the city as an additional insured on their policy that will cover the event. And that's a protection that our insurance and liability company strongly recommends that we require in cases of public events, especially those that occur on city property in some capacity. With that, staff do recommend approval after consideration and discussion of the request for the utilization of the city-owned property and the approval of a fireworks display permit as part of this event as presented. But again, I'd offer the chance for you all to ask staff questions or the applicant if you have those questions.
Or did you say that some of the participants were here who might want to speak to the event?
Good evening. My name is Lauren Feldcamp and most of you probably know me as the superintendent of schools here in Tongonoxie. But I'm representing a reenacting group that I have been involved with for over 30 years. And so my hobby is historical reenacting, both Civil War and World War II. And about two years ago, Andy Burke had asked me about the possibility of trying to do a military vehicle show in Tongonoxie. They do a car show every year, so we were thinking about trying to do something different. So if Andy, I could have Andy tell you why the VFW initiated this project. So this is more something that they're trying to do.
So initially, we do a VFW car show. We're gonna do that again in June. It's very popular and it's a nice venue because you have the shade of trees and a lot of folks like coming down and bringing their cars. And at several of our car shows, we've had military vehicles participate and we don't really have a category for them, but we still judge them. And if they, one of the Deuce and Haves won because of its mural that it has on it, it has a nice little mural mixed in with the camouflage and stuff. And so a lot of the military vehicle operators had asked us if we would ever consider doing a military vehicle show. And so a couple of years went by and kind of kicked it around, never really got off the ground. But we would like to do one. We always liked the idea of it. And so when I got together with Lauren, Lauren's got a lot of contacts that I didn't have with the military vehicle preservation folks that maintain and collect these vehicles. And then it kind of started getting some traction and moving along. So this year is an appropriate year, I think, for starting off and seeing how well this goes. And if it goes well, we'd like to do something annually. But this year is the 80th anniversary of D-Day. And so in kind of recognition of that and as well as to try and maybe get the VFW and American Legion of Tongonoxie, both organizations are looking at a kind of a recruiting goal. You know, if we can get local interests, you know, some of the younger folks that maybe don't know what the organizations are about, things like that. We're gonna have some pop-ups that have information for them to come by and ask questions and things like that. So, and then there'll be, you know, we're kind of kicking around whether we're gonna do Burger Burn or how we're gonna do a kind of a food service on our property down there. But it'll be a lot like the car show. Now Lauren's got the reenactors, which for the, I don't know if any of you have ever been to McLouth and seen the Patriots Day celebration up at McLouth. Those reenactors are pretty much the same guys. I think they're the same guy. And that's very interesting. I've been to it several times. So when he brought the idea of the reenactors, you know, we were all for that because it's a good historical representation and it might draw a bigger crowd of folks to come down and watch. And if we can get more interest, we might possibly get more veterans to sign up or just, you know, a good community event. And if it goes well, then like I said, we'd like to do something annually. But we'll see how this one goes. And we appreciate your time. Thank you.
I've been putting on, or I've been helping. I helped organize the Kansas National Guard Heartland Days event in Topeka for the last 10 years. And so I basically have patterned this almost exactly after what I do in Topeka. We are covered by the WW2HRS, which is the National World War II Historical Reenacting Society. And that's what you were referring to, the insurance umbrella. All of our reenactors have their own liability. We go through a very strenuous, before anybody can even step on field for reenacting, they have to pass safety and authenticity. That's all taken care of early in the morning. The, do you have all this? Part of it. Okay, good. So what we're thinking, what we're trying to do is just a small skirmish. They usually last about 20 to 30 minutes in length. And it is, the area that we would need to use would be the area to the west, across the bridge, it would, city-owned property. It's large enough for us to put on a small skirmish so that the community or people can come out and watch. After the little skirmish, people come out, there's a lot of historical conversation, you know, with uniforms, equipment, back in the trees where they have the car show, that's where all the vehicles would be staged and they would stay there. There's not enough room to bring all the vehicles out on that area. It's just not. So, under the trees, you would have the tents, the reenactors would be camping along with their vehicles. And then, of course, across to the west in that little area of the city property would be the reenactment, I think 10:30 and the other one at 2:00. And that's the only time with, there'd be reenactments. The cannon firing is, would be over by the, off to the west. Oh, there's a mound just to the south of the, what's that, what do you call it? The pavilion?
Yeah, the large pavilion that's over there.
The pavilion. There's a flat area over there and actually the cannon would fire into the trees. You know, that straight, kind of a southeast location. And so, you know, this isn't a moneymaker at all. They're doing this free. The reenactors are coming in. There's no charge for coming into it, so that's what that's all about. I hadn't, the fireworks thing, I just want to address that and the weapons. The weapons are all firing blanks. I mean, they're firing .30 cal and .30 ought six type brass shells. And they're all inspected before they step on the field. I mean, everybody has to show their weapons and their ammo. That's all required. It falls under our guidelines. There, the cannon, of course, would be fired, this is loud. The only other thing is sometimes the weapons, or there might be puffs of smoke. People puff smoke for this effect, but I'm not real sure about any other fireworks. I mean, we haven't contacted any pyrotechnicians for anything like that. So we would be making all the noise, basically with rifles and submachine guns and this. So that's really, I just, is there, do you have any questions?
I have a couple. Sorry. How are y'all doing? Andy, I like the idea of a military vehicle show, car show. That's a great idea. I had not thought about that, but I know especially when our boys were little, they would have gone bananas for it. For, when the date came up, right after we talked about the swim meet, it sounds like there'll be an overlap right in that same corner of town for parking, for the swim meet.
Isn't the swim, is the swim meet on Friday?
It's the day before, yeah.
Yeah, we don't, there won't, we won't use Friday.
Nobody's gonna be coming early to get...
The only thing on Friday is there will be people in the park, like with the trees.
Setting up Friday.
Some of them will be bringing in their trucks or trailers and their Jeeps in park. But as far as...
Okay, so that'll all be, that won't be taking up parking for the meet because I know the meet is, everybody's excited to be there and it really fills up the town, I mean, in a good way.
No, there won't be any people from the community even showing up for this until Saturday morning. Friday morning is just people setting up tents and they'll all stay on the American Legion or the VFW.
Yeah, okay, okay. Sorry, I just wanted to clarify that we weren't inadvertently setting ourselves up for just, you know, more than our town's usually used for. So when this is happening in McLouth, is it happening like in the town or on the outskirts of the town?
They do a street fight, yeah. They call it the Patriots Day.
Like, is it in the city proper?
It's on Union Street.
It's on Union Street. Okay, that's, I was asking, because I was trying to think, with the city property, there are a lot of people who live right there and I didn't know if we had checked with any of the neighbors.
That's what, we're gonna need some help just notifying everybody.
Notifying or should we ask them? Because I know a couple of people who live like right there. An elderly woman, some people with elderly pets who live like right across the street. So I just, before we agree to...
I was gonna ask for the city.
Like to have guns, fake or not, you know, out. I just wanted to make sure that we were doing our due diligence as the council to make sure that the city, just that part of the city, not, I'm not talking about the park, the VFW, but I'm just talking about the city lots there, if we're gonna use them, it's for something that the citizens are okay with. They live right there, the neighbors.
We haven't spoken with any of the neighbors in that area yet.
Yeah, I just, that would be something that would be, I would be interested in knowing how they would feel about it.
So are we gonna, are you saying that we'd have to have their permission?
Well, I mean, the VFW park, it seems pretty big. I just don't know if there's room to do the battle in there, kind of within the tree area also.
That'll be completely full of vehicles, tents, bivouac.
Has the fairground been proposed as an option?
We'd have to keep everything, I mean, we want to do it at the VFW park.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, there's, no, I wouldn't do it.
Is this, I don't know, counsel, has anybody else had any of these thoughts?
Counsel?
Well, it'd sure be appropriate to make sure that they knew what was going on in advance. That makes a lot of sense to me. I'm totally tickled that you guys are actually tag teaming, getting together to do this and again, another thing to bring things into town. But if there are some people that might be scared, we ought to tell them in advance what's going on and just explain to staff, in my book, just explain to staff really what they should expect. And then we can send somebody out or send a note out to three, four, five houses around it.
I think that's highly appropriate. We want that.
I don't want people to be alarmed, false police calls, be frightened in their homes. I just, that doesn't seem like something that we would want to do.
That would never be our intent.
I'll just say, I lived in McLouth, rather, for a long time on Union Street. And I know it's 170 years different, but the noise wasn't that, wasn't really very loud at all for me, but...
Well, that's good to know.
But again, that's, we're dealing with just a, I like 170 years difference in technology. I don't know how much louder this would be, if at all, so...
No, it's a .30 ought six. No, it's, it's a thirty-odd-six, thirty-cal bullet.
Um, I will say, for McClough, that was always, I mean, it was impressive how the turnout and the pride that that city takes in that event. So that would be cool if we could replicate that here, so.
Anything else, counsel? Okay.
Thank you.
Um, is there any conversation, uh, more regarding the, this event? If not, I would accept a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the special event permit application and public fireworks display request for the military vehicle show and World War II reenactment organized by the Tonganoxie VFW Post and the World War II Historical Reenactment Society, Inc., located in the VF, uh, VFW Park and on city property adjacent to the VFW Park on June twenty-second, twenty-twenty-four from seven-thirty a.m. to five p.m.
Thank you, Mr. Dale. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. Is, um, would you do a roll call vote, Ms. Huntington, please?
Mr. Partridge?
Aye.
Ms. Stevens?
Aye.
Mr. Donnelly?
Aye.
Mr. Dale?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Thank you very much.
Dan, you might see if we can get some folks out there to, send them a note or the home, the homeowners around there. Uh, it gotta be simple to do.
Yeah.
There aren't too many residences in that area, so I'm sure we could do a letter, um, identifying it, maybe some social media advertising too.
Yeah, something like that, like the timeframes for the, for the battles.
Even with the lib, with the library run, we make sure that people know along the route that, when it is and when it's gonna be coming down, so. Okay. Moving on to item D, consider approval of Leavenworth County Development Corporation two thousand twenty-four funding distribution. Mr. Brekovich.
Yes, thanks, Mayor. Um, Lisa Hack is here this evening and she has a presentation. She's the, uh, executive director for LCDC. Um, this is an annual request and I'm sure she'll incorporate some of this, but, um, there's a funding agreement in place with, uh, the, the four cities, uh, or there had been in the past, all four of the larger cities in the county. So, City of Leavenworth, City of Lansing, City of Baser and City of Tonganoxie. Uh, I'm not sure if all four of those large cities are still funding partners. Lisa's nodding her head to confirm that. Um, there, and, and those costs are typically, uh, proportionally divided based on population sizes of the city. Um, the City of Leavenworth and the City of Tonganoxie pay an additional flat fee of ten thousand dollars because we have active business parks that, uh, LCDC does a great job in helping us market and represent, um, to a variety of agencies that are, uh, chasing leads that come in, into that segment. Um, I know that in the past, uh, there's county funding that's associated here. I, I don't profess to be an expert in it, but to the best of my research abilities, I believe the county, uh, has a three-tenths of a mill that they assess via property tax for e, economic development. I believe in the past, the, all of that went to fund LCDC and Leavenworth County Port Authority. And then in fairly recent history, the county, uh, kept that mill roughly the same, but has retained some of it to hire their own in-house economic development, uh, person. And so, um, I, I think around that time, LCDC was looking to get a little more creative. And I believe that was roughly the timeframe that the additional, uh, ten thousand dollar flat fee came into play. So, I think I've almost exhausted my, uh, expertise in the LCDC. And if Lisa has a kind heart, she'll come up to the podium and save me, uh, and take over and, uh, let us know, uh, all the great things LCDC does. Thanks, Lisa.
Thank you, George. I appreciate it. Uh, Mayor Fries, city council members and city staff, thank you all for having me. Um, you all are gonna have to use your imagination as I talk through this. And, uh, we, I guess our, our slides aren't, are, we're not able to use the slides today. So, um, I know most of you have heard kind of how we're structured. Um, I'll run through that really quickly because I know, uh, what's more interesting is how we're doing this economic development and kind of an update of where we are, uh, today. Um, as, as George was talking about, um, we are a public-private nonprofit organization. We bring both the public sector and the private sector together, um, to collaborate for economic development in Leavenworth County. And as George said, uh, we receive funds from the Port Authority, also four cities, uh, Leavenworth, Lansing, Baser and Tonganoxie. And as George said, that is determined by a formula that takes into account population and, uh, property valuation. And then we also have about sixty to seventy private sector investors. Um, the benefits of having that basically is taking the expertise of both the public sector and the private sector, bringing them together. And then we can also move pretty quickly like, as the private se, sector can do. Um, the LCDC structure, we are governed by a board of directors. We have twenty-six right now, and twenty of those are from the private sector and six are from the public sector. Uh, we are led by an executive committee of five. We have, uh, right now Jeremy Greenemeyer is our president. He, that position, that office will roll over in a cup, in one more year, every two years. And then they'll roll through, they, uh, rotate that position. And then we have three staff members. Uh, I am now the executive director. Then we have Diana Dodd, who is our assistant director, and Mary Mack, who is our office manager. Um, we, because we are limited with funds, because we're limited with how many people work at LCDC, we look for, uh, how we can have the most, uh, effect. And we, so what we do is we, we focus on the primary industry. The primary industry are those companies, uh, such as manufacturers, wholesale distribution. They're the ones that are hiring lots of people. They are, um, building buildings that bring in lots of, of capital, uh, investment and therefore property taxes. Um, and then those are the companies that are, uh, causing the population to expand. And then the need for retail and housing and that sort of thing kind of follows. So we feel like if we focus on that primary industry, we can really, um, utilize our resources wisely. So, the way we do that, the way we do economic development is we do it through business attraction and then business retention and expansion. Business attraction is kind of what I focus on as well as the operations of the organization. And so we do that in several ways. We have a professional website. We do contract with a professional marketing company that helps us. They're used to working with economic developers. And they help us with things like our website, uh, with social media, with our email blasts, our mailers, um, that highlight some of our industrial part, properties. Um, I also tend ti, uh, networking events. So I spend a lot of time going to Kansas City where there are events that are, um, that a lot of retail, real estate agents and developers attend. Uh, the importance i, is getting those relationships built. Uh, time and time again, it's been proven that people want to do business with people they know. So that's kind of my, my focus is to develop those relationships. I also go to, um, different events throughout the, the United States. We're a part of what's called Team Kansas. This is a state, uh, organization, uh, intended to market the state of Kansas. And for instance, I'm going tomorrow to Phoenix, Arizona, where they have invited twenty-five, or they will have, they've invited more, but they will have twenty-five site selectors attend. These are people that are hired by companies to find their next location. And those are the people that we're trying to develop relationships with. And so about seven people, uh, from the seven communities in Kansas, we're all gonna go there and host this not, evening with them and get to know them. Uh, we are not only there to ha, to represent Kansas, but we then get a chance to highlight our specific communities. So that's why I'm going to that. Uh, then there are other conferences that I'll be going to as well throughout the year, uh, that will be participated by those same people. And then, uh, today was another example. Um, we get our, our project leads from a few different sources. Uh, one of those is the Area Regional Economic Development Organization, Kansas City Area Development Council, KCA DC. And they just hired s, a new project manager, uh, one of the people that works on these, these business projects. And her name is Samantha. And so, uh, she came to Leavenworth and we did a county tour, kind of showed her all the properties and the quality, uh, li, quality of life things, the, the amenities in our community. And that's my job to show her how great Leavenworth County is. And we, uh, went ahead, our last stop was at the Tonganoxie Business Park. And then we had lunch here at eighteen-sixty-six, which we saw a few of the, there. So that was really nice. Those are other ways of marketing our community because these are people, uh, that we want to remember. When they're working on these projects, they wanna, we want to make sure Leavenworth County is, um, top of mind with them. Uh, we work very closely with the Department of Commerce, Kansas Department of Commerce. As I said, they've got the Team Kansas organization, but we also, uh, work with them th, with, uh, project development as well. So we maintain those relationships. Um, the other things would be, oh, the other final way I would say, uh, for business attraction is responding to RFI's, requests for information. These are, um, they can be as simple as an email that comes to me and says, "We're looking for, uh, forty acres to build a three-hundred-thousand-square-foot building." And it's going to, if we choose your location, it's gonna have, you know, a hundred and fifty jobs and, and, and cost us a hundred million dollars. And at that point, I will look and see, okay, do we have something that could potentially fit? And pretend, I pick out the Tonganoxie Business Park, I will then call the city, I will talk to George and find out if he thinks that that is a fit as well. And if he thinks that's a good fit, then we'll go ahead and start gathering all the information that this particular RFI asks for. And sometimes these RFI's can be as simple as just provide a brochure. And then they can also be a hundred and fifty-page Excel worksheet that will ask questions about, um, your weather, um, do you, what seismic zone are you in? I, it, no two RFI's are alike. And so sometimes it can be pretty labor-intensive. Um, but you put all the ga, gather up all the information, you put it in, in the packet the way they'd like it, and then we send it off. And sometimes we hear back, and sometimes we don't hear anything. And I can go and check with those, uh, project leaders. Uh, but they, again, they're, they're, they have the same experience. Sometimes they hear and sometimes they hear back. Uh, so, you just never know. But the fact that I keep submitting properties in our county for these projects is every time more chance to raise awareness of our community. And so that's a, a good thing. It's a, a marketing piece. So I said business attraction, we also do economic development through business retention expansion. Many times in a community, over, uh, fifty percent of a community's capital investment comes from those existing companies that expand and grow. So it's really important that we make sure we're trying to help them overcome barriers to growth. So that's why, uh, what Diana Dodd does, she focuses on our existing i, industries and she meets with them at least annually to try and find out what kind of issues they might be experiencing. She's got a toolkit that she kind of pulls from and tries to connect them with resources that will help them. A lot of times that's workforce issues. Um, people are struggling, uh, all over the, the, the nation for workforce. She's been working very closely with high schools in this, um, county and with the Kansas City Community College to try and come up with ways that they can, um, provide potential workforce for these existing companies. She works with Workforce Partnership, um, and also, I, I said the community college and then the universities. So she's also started our first annual, uh, last year, our first annual career fair. And that was held at the Tonganoxie High School. That was a big success. And so we're having another one this year on May tenth. We think that's a, a great value for our existing companies. Um, let me see, the next thing. Talked about that. Almost done. Um, I have a chart that kind of talks about our three-year impact. Um, what, I just wanted to say that in twenty-twenty-three, uh, we, we, it's how we q, quantify the work that we do. We keep track of all the new businesses that come in and all the capital investment that they bring. We keep track of the new jobs that come in. We keep track of, um, the jobs that the existing businesses are adding. And we keep track of the amount of money that we help save those existing commit, commu, uh, sorry, companies that they invest back into their community. Um, so in twenty-twenty-three, we recorded sixty-eight million dollars in capital investment with, for new, uh, projects. And most of that came from DSM for a niche. So we're really excited to see that kind of project. And so, uh, what it doesn't capture, all these numbers that we have is, uh, are the ancillary businesses that come because of these, these manufacturers and industrial businesses. They don't account for the population growth that happens because of the new jobs. And they don't account for the new, um, gas station that might come because there's enough population now or the, you know, grocery store or whatever. So, um, but at least we're able to quantify, uh, some of those numbers. And another cup, the next two slides, kind of, I put together one for Urban Hess Business Park and one for Tonganoxie Business Park. It just kind of showed you. I just, I, I get excited when I think back when I first started in two thousand seventeen. Urban Hess Business Center, it had, uh, Midstar Lab, SNS Alloy and HMC, uh, Performance Coatings. And the Leavenworth, uh, County Annex was in there. And I'm just so excited to see everything that's happened since then. I mean, IST, they've built two buildings. And you've got Wilson Glass, who has now doubled their footprint there. And then DL Granite and Design. So I'm really excited to see all of those. I know sometimes, um, it seems like when you're working day to day that these things are so slow, but it is the long game. It is a very long game, but every decision that, that's made now will have an effect at some point. When I think about the Tonganoxie Business Park and all that I've learned from, uh, council member Donnelly about the, the choices that you all made years and years ago, um, before the Tonganoxie Business Park, uh, came. And now look at it. I mean, it's just, it's amazing that, you know, you've got an almost entirely filled park and almost half a billion dollars of capital investment in that park. It's truly exciting. And we'll continue to do what we can to, to, uh, market those community, or those, uh, parks and, and hopefully future parks. Um, the Port Authority, I'd like to say something about that. I had a nice picture of all the board members there. And I was gonna point out, [laughing] council member Chris Donnelly, who is, um, currently on that board and is also the chair. Um, we are, we work closely together with the Port Authority. The Port Authority is a volunteer board of seven people. And they are appointed, um, two from the county, two from the City of Leavenworth, and then one from, uh, Tonganoxie, Baser and Lansing. And so council member Donnelly is the appointed member for the City of Tonganoxie and also the chair right now. And we're really honored to have had his leadership for this time. Uh, the Port Authority has a committee that I want to talk about real quick, the Industrial Site Visioning Committee. This committee is put together just to recommend a site, a future site or sites for a future business park at some point. Um, as you know, it takes many decisions, many, lots of money and a long time to develop a park, a business park. So the time is to, is now to start talking about that. And so that's what this committee is doing. There's representation from each of the four cities, the county, the Port Authority, the LCDC and a couple of local developers. And they've brought in experts. They, what they've done is they followed a, a, uh, process to educate this group first, how it was done before. And then they are going to evaluate properties and then they'll recommend. And during the education piece, they brought in experts from, uh, our Regional Economic Development Organization, our Department of Commerce and, um, large developers to come in and kind of talk about what they're seeing, project trends, um, what the projects, what kind of size of parks they're asking for now as opposed to years ago. Um, we also brought in the utilities. And we've learned that , uh, power, oh, the power that they need now is, um, uh, just amazing. They need lots of power. So also we, the last meeting, we had a gentleman come from Omaha, uh, fro, he was representing Union Pacific Railway. So he came and talked to them. So with all this information, um, they will be ready to evaluate properties and then to make the rep, recommendation. And with that, it will be up to the communities to decide, uh, if and, and if so, when and how they will pursue that particular recommendation. And, uh, LCDC does do the staff work for the Port Authority. The last, uh, slide was just to sh, to share with you our events coming up quickly. Um, we have a quarterly, we have a board meetings every month, but quarterly we do, uh, sort of a, a informational one. And this one is going to be held at Deer Ridge Estates next Thursday, uh, April eleventh. And it'll be eleven-thirty to one. And we are having- And it'll be 11:30 to 1:00, and we are having representatives from Panasonic to come and talk about how that project is going. It's really important, if anybody wants to go, you have to RSVP. It's corporate policy for Panasonic. They need to know who's coming before. So if you want to come, please contact us and RSVP. And if you want to eat, we need to know that too, because it's, we've got to order food. And so we're excited about that. And then we have the Career Fair, May 10th. We've got a golf tournament, September 13th, and then we've got investor appreciation in November. At this point, I'd like to take any questions, if you have any.
Any questions, Council?
Obviously, I'll make a comment. And it'd be related really to overall funding in the county for economic development. You've heard me talk a lot about economic development, and you're tired of it, I'm sure. But having, and prior to my retirement from the banking business, I served on Economic Development Board in a city in Johnson County. And they, that city alone spends so much more money than our whole entire county on economic development. And I can tell you that I am proud of what Tongonoxi does, and I've been proud for a long time. We step up for being a small community. We've stepped up, and we are seeing the fruits of that. If we could all get together in this county and figure out a way to properly fund economic development, it would be incredible for what we can do. You've all been to Johnson County, you can see what they put on. Every week they put something on, and, but they make a number at it. So Tongonoxi leadership, I think, has been long-served, and I think we need to continue to be a leader in economic development, even though we're one of the smallest, if not the smallest, community that's involved in it in Leavenworth County. So that's my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. Anyone else? Thank you, Lisa. Okay, I guess seeing no more conversation, I'd be looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we authorize the 2024 funding contribution to the Leavenworth County Development Corporation in an amount not to exceed $20,705.
Thank you, Mr. Partridge. Is there a second?
Second.
I heard Mr. Dale. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Lisa.
All right, and I'll re, I'll, I'll extend again my invitation for you to move your offices down here to Tongonoxi.
Will take it.
Okay. Right, now E. Consider approval of revised disposition of 2011 fire department utility vehicle. Mr. Porter?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to recognize Fire Chief John Zimmelman, who's also here tonight, and I'm sure eager to answer any questions you have about this change of approach that we're proposing. What you see in the agenda packet is a quick description that last spring, when the city procured the purchase of a 2023 Chevy pickup truck to replace a fire department utility truck, an F-250, 2020, or 2011 vehicle model year. The purchase at the time also included the council's authorization to dispose of the truck via Purple Wave, which is an online auction site typically used by the city for vehicles and large-scale equipment sales, which allows us to dispose of it in a competitive environment without having to solicit and take bids personally with city staff doing that level of effort. Since that time, our new truck has been purchased and put into service. We do have equipment present on the truck, ranging from lights and sirens to a slide-out gear holder-type device in the bed of the truck. And so it's been stripped of all that essential equipment. And right as we were about to initiate the online auction listing, we were contacted by, I think, several different jurisdictions who expressed interest in possibly purchasing it direct from the city to avoid incurring the fees that purchasers on online auctions inherit with those agreements. And so the biggest level of interest was the quote, included in the agenda packet tonight, from Stranger Township Fire Department, our neighbors directly to the east, with whom we have a mutual aid agreement that we operate within, and we run many calls with fire and EMS services in their region as well as our eastern boundaries. What you can see they proposed is a purchase price of $20,000. Staff reviewed the submittal and compared it to current online listings or appraisals of value. And you can see some of those listed in the agenda packet as well for reference. And staff do support agreeing with that proposal and selling the truck directly to our adjoining fire district for their use and continued use of the equipment. But I'm sure Fire Chief Zimmelman, or myself, or anyone else would be happy to take any questions you have.
Chief, did you have anything to add?
I did not, I just didn't know if you had any questions on it. We tried to come up with a fair price that we felt was competitive with everything in the market. And we figured that $20,000 is a fair market price, especially on our end.
Thank you. Council, do you have any questions?
No.
If not, I would be entertaining a motion.
And Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to authorize the disposition of the city's 2011 Ford F-250 vehicle utility 622 via direct sales to Stranger Township Fire Department for an amount of $20,000.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Chief. F, minor, or city manager agenda, Mr. Brackovich?
No additional items, time, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, item G, city attorney agenda?
No items, Mayor.
Okay. Mayor Protam agenda, anything, Ms. Stevens?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Okay. City Council agenda, anyone have anything to share? All right, that brings it to me. We did the proclamations earlier in the meeting, and that brings us to number three, the executive session for consultation with an attorney for the public body or agency, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. Could I get someone, Ms. Stevens, to read this, please?
I move that the city council recess into executive session to obtain legal advice pursuant to the attorney-client consultation exception in KSA 75-4319B2. The executive session will include the city attorney, city manager, and assistant city manager. The open meeting will resume in city council chamber in 20 minutes, which would be, what's the exact?
8:18.
Huh?
8:18.
8:18.
Second. Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
An executive session.
She just said, just me read.
Okay.
I move that the city council recess into executive session to obtain legal advice pursuant to attorney-client consultation expectation KSA 75-4319B2. Executive session will include city attorney, city manager, assistant city manager. The open meeting will resume in the council chambers in ten minutes, which is?
Say eight thirty.
At eight thirty.
Second.
All in favor of the I?
Aye.
Aye.
Executive session has ended. The record shows that no binding action was taken during the executive session. We have one more executive session. Ms. Stevens, would you...
Sure. I move that the city council recess into executive session to discuss matters relating to security measures pursuant to the security measures exception in KSA 75-4319B12. The executive session will include city attorney, city manager, assistant city manager. The open meeting will resume in the city council chamber in ten minutes.
Second. This is the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
For an executive session.